Call Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero. Commissioner Daniel Chavez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Motion to choose up some members?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity to connect and share our wisdom, ideas, and experiences. Thank you for the gift of fellowship and for the chance to grow together in your love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Right, at this time, under proclamations, we're gonna call Mr. Bob Schmidt, proclaiming May 5th, 2025 as South Texas Border Chapter Texas Master Naturalist Day.
I'm gonna defer to the president of the South Texas Border Chapter of Texas Master Naturalists, Ms. Anne Mayville.
Welcome.
Welcome. Please come forward. And whoever you have with you, have everybody come to the front, please.
On behalf of the members of the South Texas Border Chapter of the Texas Master Naturalists, I would like to thank the city of FAR for this honor and for allowing us to give of our time and expertise in helping your city be an economic-friendly community, one that supports and encourages growth and restoration of native plants, insects, birds, wildlife that make the Rio Grande Valley such a unique, diverse ecosystem. The South Texas Border Chapter of Texas Master Naturalists was chartered in October 2015, so we're celebrating our 10th anniversary this year. We are an organization that supports activities in Hildago, Starr, and Cameron County, and we have more than 95 active members who serve as nature guides, administrative support, educators, speakers, workers, gardeners, physical laborers, building and maintaining trails, interpreting nature for visitors, weeding gardens, and supporting citizen science activities. In the city of FAR, South Texas Border Chapter of Master Naturalist members have since 2015 supported more than 2,000 volunteer hours with an estimated economic impact of over $48,000 and provided direct service to more than 500 citizens of all ages at community events like the recent Eco Fest and through ongoing service at Santa Ana Wildlife Refuge and community of native plant gardens. And we are particularly proud of our native plant garden at St. George the Great Martyr here in FAR. Overall, Texas State Park, Texas Border Chapter has provided over $1.5 million of community service throughout the Rio Grande Valley. Thank you again, city of FAR, for this great honor. We'd also like to recognize our chapter advisors that are here today. Javier De Leon, Superintendent Esteroiano Grande State Park in Weslaco. Ernesto Garcia Ortega. Oh, over here, okay. He's a wildlife biologist with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. Sarah Stewart, she's with Aqua, she's an extension agent with Texas AgriLife Extension Coastal and Marine. Roy Rodriguez is a nature interpreter at Benson State Park who supports us. Finally, I'd like to thank all of you again for this honor.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
My turn.
Oh, sorry about that. Page two.
Yeah, real quick. This is really important to thank you all for this proclamation, this recognition. Just wanna say, like Anne said, I'm Javier De Leon, I'm with Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, State Parks Division. The Texas Master Naturalists, it's a statewide program, it's a nationwide program. But the mission of the Texas Master Naturalists program is to develop a core of well-informed volunteers to provide education, outreach, and service dedicated to the beneficial management of natural resources and natural areas within the communities of Texas. Starting in 1997, this group of master naturalists from all over the state have built up to 49 local chapters serving 214 counties all over Texas. In the Rio Grande Valley, there's two chapters. The South Texas Border Chapter is based out of FAR. RGV Chapter is based out of San Monito. Both chapters covered Alga County and have assisted in FAR at various times. Here, the Master Naturalist Chapter is sponsored by both Texas Parks and Wildlife Department and Texas AgriLife Extension statewide. As of 2023, the program has certified 1,700 master naturalist volunteers all over the state, impacted 234,000 acres, you know, benefiting wildlife and native plant habitats, contributed 6.9 million hours of service, and have reached 7.1 million residents of Texas statewide. And all of the efforts by these folks and folks of all over Texas is equal to $140 million worth of volunteer work. So thank you again, Mayor and Commission, for this recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you all for all you do. Whereas the mission of the Texas Master Naturalist Program is to develop a corps of well-informed volunteers who provide education, outreach, and service dedicated to the beneficial management and natural resources and natural areas within their communities for the state of Texas. And whereas since its founding in 1997 by a group of dedicated conservationists, the Texas Master Naturalist Program has grown to include 49 local chapters serving 214 counties across the state, sponsored by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department and Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service. And whereas of 2023, the Texas Master Naturalist Program has trained more than 17,000 certified volunteers who have contributed over 6.9 million hours of service, impacted more than 234,800 acres of wildlife and native plant habitats, reached over 7.1 million Texas residents of all ages, and provided an economic growth value of over $140 million to the state of Texas. And whereas the South Texas Border Chapter for the Texas Master Naturalist Program was chartered in October 2015 to serve Hildago, Starr, and Cameron Counties with over 70 active members offering their expertise and labor as nature guides, educators, citizen scientists, gardeners, and conservation workers. Whereas within the city of FAR, members of the South Texas Border Chapter have contributed more than 2,000 volunteer hours since 2015, resulted in an estimated economic impact of over $48,000, directly serving more than 500 residents through community events such as Eco Fest and through ongoing stewardships at Santa Ana National Wildlife Refuge and local native plant gardens. Therefore, I, Roberto Bobby Carrillo, representing Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, I do hereby proclaim the day of May 5th, 2025, as South Texas Border Chapter Texas Master Naturalist. If y'all could come up, y'all could take, uh, don't just a picture?
Thank you, thank you. All right, next, under item 2B, we're gonna call up Imelda and her staff for a proclamation proclaiming May 4th through 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week.
Hello. Imelda is a city clerk. I've served the city for 23 years, and with me today is Alessandra Garcia. She's our Assistant City Clerk. She's served the city 14 years. And I also have Ms. Jessica Gomez, who's our local registrar. She handles birth and death records here for the city. She's been with us approximately five years. We also have a fourth member who's not here, present. Her name is Maritza Gutierrez. She's our Executive Administrative Assistant, and she's served the city 18 years. So I'd like to thank you all for the proclamation, the recognition, and the opportunity for me to serve as your city clerk. I also wanna thank my staff for their hard work and efforts, you know, in assisting the community and our residents. So, thank you, ladies. So many people don't fully understand what a municipal clerk does, so I wanted to take an opportunity to educate the public about what duties and responsibilities we handle. Oftentimes, you hear people say, "Oh, she's just a clerk," which, to us, that implies that our responsibilities are minor and routine, when in fact, our roles are essential to the functioning of our city. Our work as a municipal clerk requires extensive knowledge of laws, policies, technology, and governance. Municipal clerks are responsible for ensuring transparent government. We also support democracy by overseeing elections and public engagement. We also manage official records that preserve our community's history and legal integrity. In closing, municipal clerks are not just clerks. We are guardians of public trust, the keepers of history, and facilitators of democracy.
Thank you, ladies, thank you.
Whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk is a vital part of local government and is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of governmental and other, at other levels. And whereas, professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all and serving as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, the office of municipal clerk, also known as city clerk, has duties that are statutory mandated in Texas Local Government Code 22071 and 22073. And whereas, professional municipal clerks continuously strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, annual meetings of their state, as well as provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, the office of the city clerk adheres to strict ethical, statutory, and recognized professional standards. And this office is the professional link to responsive government in FAR by innovatively responding and serving its internal and external customers with integrity and efficiency, while responsibly and accurately preserving the records of the past. Now, therefore, I, I Itza Flores, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR Texas, by the virtue and authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week.
Ladies, if you would, come to the front, please.
Next, under item 2C, we're gonna call up Chief Gonzalez for a proclamation proclaiming May 11th through 17th as FAR Police Memorial Week.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Dr. Flores and Mr. Rodriguez, Juan Gonzalez, Director for the Police Department, along with our dedicated police staff here today. On behalf of our agency, we extend our sincere appreciation for your support in this year's proclamation, recognizing the week of May 11th through the 17th as FAR Police Memorial Week. During this time, we, along with law enforcement agencies, unite to honor the memory of fallen officers and their families. It's a solemn week in which we mourn their loss, reflect on their sacrifice, and celebrate the legacy of those who bravely gave their lives in the line of duty. Their courage and commitment will never be forgotten. We also express our gratitude to all police officers for their unwavering dedication to protecting the safety, security, and freedom of our communities. Thank you once again for your support and honoring the brave men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our communities.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it, all you guys. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial's Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the 136 dedicated members of the FAR Police Department. Each year, approximately 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported, resulting in approximately 17,000 injuries. Since the first recorded death in 1786, 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington, DC, and 345 new names of fallen heroes are being added this spring. Whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial's Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. The city of FAR hereby formally designates and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Now, therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, in representation of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as FAR Police Memorial Week.
And just before you guys come up here, I just wanna thank you all for the sacrifices that you do. You guys are very much unappreciated until they need, somebody needs you. And then you're rushing over to get there, and once you get there, it's all solved, and people forget what you all actually do and what you're here for. And not just yourselves, your families. It's a, your profession is a very dedicated profession, which involves, you know, not just what you guys do during the day, but when you go back home. And it's not easy. You're on the job all day long, and you gotta forget about that when you go back home. It's a very, very tough job. I have a lot of friends who are in law enforcement, and I have a very, very high respect for all you all. And I personally want to thank you all for what you do here in the city of FAR. Thank you, thank you very, very much.
No, I just wanna thank you for not giving me a ticket this past year. I haven't gotten a ticket in a long time, but I have gotten a ticket in FAR. But no, thank you very much for your service. Really appreciate you deciding to come to the city of FAR. Thank you for serving the community, and I really appreciate your service. Thank you.
I also just wanted to add, thank you for what you do for us, for the community. And also, I'd like to thank your families for allowing you to do what you do. Because when it's difficult out there, you leave your families behind, and you serve and you protect our community. So that is a sacrifice, and I do appreciate that. I don't know if we all take a look at it from that aspect, but it's a hard job being related to a police officer because we, you know, the people stay behind and everybody else comes first. So that's a sacrifice, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for doing what you do. Now, everybody can step up into their shoes and do what you do, because you never know when it's gonna turn really bad. You know, sometimes, many people may see you guys sitting down doing reports, but it could change in a couple of seconds on a car stop, become a chase, and it can go further than that. And the hard thing about doing that is that you always need to be ready. And you guys are. You stay of mind for just being who you are and being in the career that you guys are in says a lot about yourself, so thank you for doing that.
Anybody for public testimony?
No, sir.
Public hearings?
No, sir.
All right, next, under City Manager's Report, we have item 5A, the City Engineers Report. Information's in your packet. We have Maria Langel here, if you all have any questions. Okay. Moving on to item 5B, we're gonna call up Carla Monje, who's gonna talk to us about a very special member of our community. Welcome.
Carla wasn't able to come, but I'm on behalf of her. I'm Brenda Hernandez.
Welcome.
On behalf of Regina's Modeling Academy, we proudly congratulate Lea Dinari Guerra Hernandez on receiving the prestigious Golden Presidential Community Service Award. Lea has demonstrated outstanding dedication to her community through her selfless service and leadership. As a role model to her peers, she consistently leads by example, inspiring other young ladies to strive for excellence. In addition to her community work, Lea is a standout student at Allen &amp; William Arnold and Mentory, excelling in all subjects and earning recognition as a top AR reader. Her achievements both in and out at the classroom are a true testament to her character, commitment, and drive. We are honored to celebrate Lea's accomplishments and look forward to seeing the incredible impact she will continue to make. Congratulations, Lea. Keep shining bright. Thank you. So she won the Gold Community Service, Presidential Community Service Award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. North Texas in FAR getting awards like this, this is what our future represents. Wow, outstanding. I'm so excited. We're gonna have one great future. She's probably gonna be one of the ones that are gonna be up here one of these days, serving the community, because she's already doing it at such a young age. Menta, thank you very much for what you do. You are one in a million, definitely, one in a million. Thank you so much. Y'all come up for a picture? Somebody will take a picture for you.
Next, we'll call up Beauty with our city events of interest.
Good afternoon, City Commissioners, Dr. Flores, Yuri Gonzalez with your Office of City Communications for the record. Before we move on to the flyers for the upcoming events, we have three recaps. The first one is our FAR Fire Department. Actually, members of our FAR Fire Department recently traveled to Austin with some of our senior leaders and, of course, our city managers for a special recognition. We have a recap of that.
Brave, committed, and selfless were just some of the words used to describe the three FAR firefighters at the state capitol in Austin. Battalion Chiefs Sergio Vasquez and Engineers Jesús González and Charlie Cavazos were recognized with House Resolution 399 for their efforts in battling the devastating Palisades wildfires in California earlier this year.
We welcome the city of FAR firefighters and pay tribute to their service. The members of the FAR Fire Department that are with us today, not only here on the dais, but also in the gallery, have been instrumental in serving not only the city of FAR, but the Rio Grande Valley.
It's an honor, it's a privilege. This is the first time we've traveled to Austin, to the state capitol, to be recognized for the efforts of our fire department.
State Representative Sergio Munoz Jr. helped hand the resolution and read it on the floor of the House chamber, marking a historical moment for the FAR Fire Department and Fire Chief Villar Rodriguez.
It's important for us to bring that recognition here to Austin because not only is it seen and recognized by the rest of our colleagues in the House of Representatives, but we also are in the history book and making sure that that House resolution is here for many years to come.
The FAR Fire Department was the only agency south of San Antonio to send a crew to California. FAR city leaders honored and celebrated the heroes after their arrival back home, but thought their impact deserved statewide recognition.
We knew that we had to try to move fast and get a state resolution done, and so we did that. Our team started working with State Representative Santiago Munoz, and we were able to secure a state resolution on their behalf on the floor.
FAR firefighters stood at the dais in the Texas House chamber, where the room filled with the process members rose to their feet in a powerful show of unity and gratitude.
Our fire department is one of the very few people that were authorized to be able to go help those fight those fires in California, which, in a time of need, that's what the city of FAR is all about. The mayor feels the same way, the rest of the commission. It's like, we really, really thank you for that.
These gentlemen embody excellence every day because they went out and they answered the call. The only ones in the Rio Grande Valley that were out there in the California wildfires, helping out and doing everything that they could.
Senator Chuy Nohosa also shared his praise and support.
I really want to thank you for the work you all do, especially the volunteering to go to California. Those wildfires- Those wildfires are very dangerous.
To see that each representative took the time afterwards to come and shake their hand just made it such a great event.
The City of FAR is proud of the brave firefighters that made the journey to California, and even more proud to have them as part of the FAR family. We congratulate them and thank them on this outstanding achievement.
They're ecstatic to be recognized for their efforts. I mean, truly, these employees just want to work, and they want to be really good at their jobs. They want to be the best at what they do, but they, they really appreciate the recognition that they've received for their efforts.
Dr. Jonathan Flores was obviously there. I don't know if you want to mention anything before we move on to our next video?
No, we're just extremely proud of the gentlemen and, and their leadership, and, you know, just wonderful job by them, and it was a great experience for them to be able to be out there and recognized by our state reps, senators.
Absolutely. Moving on to our second recap, this was a press conference that was spearheaded under the City of FAR, and of course, in collaboration with the Possible Dream Foundation at our EMS headquarters. We also have a recap of that video.
The Possible Dream Adult High School has come into existence because life doesn't always follow the straight path.
You know, today's a great day, because today is about legacy and impact. Because if you truly want to have an impact in your community and provide people with the opportunity to receive an education, this is, this is a great initiative and a great endeavor to be able to do that.
One-third of adults in these seven border counties do not, do not have a high school diploma, adults above the age of 25. Our biggest need was startup funds and, and locations, and FAR stepped forth beyond what I could have expected from one, from one donor or one entity.
And all of that is important, because you had people that are visionaries, like, you know, Dr. King. I think we're going to see a stronger workforce. We're going to see a more stable population. This is our home, this is where it's going to be, and this is where we're going to concentrate our efforts.
And to be able to do it now, and to really just transform lives and change the game, i- it's truly, we're so proud to be a part of it.
I can't thank you, Mayor Hernandez, and the City Commission of FAR enough, because at the end of the day, it's all about the people.
Okay, and our third recap is under Parks and Rec. This is actually two events in one, Paint the Park and Arbor Day. It happened two weeks ago. We have a recap as well.
We're here at the FAR Vanguard Nature Birding Center, and today is a special day to celebrate what we have been going on all this month, which is Paint the Park for Earth Day. And it's also a collaboration with Arbor Day. We have participants been out here since the beginning of April, trying to paint our parking spot to signify this year's Earth Day theme, which is our power, our planet.
All of them are incredible, and I got to judge them last year. It was, it was an incredible event, and the creativity from our community is just amazing. Not only for creativity, but also for environmental impact. Our mayor, Dr. Ambrosio Hernandez, our entire city commission, our city manager, Dr. Jonathan Flores, they are very big on green spaces and beautifying FAR. It's very important to them, and so events like this just help further that initiative.
I'm just like really glad that I was able to, to place. There were so many things that I wanted to do, but I thought I'd just make like a really nice scenery. I did a cross there in the middle of the sun, because, you know, God created our nature, and I think like we should take care of it as much as we can.
Okay, and Sergio Alanis is here, if there's any questions. I know that this is under, you know, it's different departments, but it's still spearheaded under Parks and Rec. Okay, moving on to the upcoming events, this is a final reminder and the last call to register for our FAR Warrior Race happening this Saturday. The last day to register is this Friday at 6:00 PM. Once again, $25 for students, it's swim, it's bike, it's the running, and of course, we wrap up this event with the obstacle course. Our next event is Work Mode On. Work Mode On is actually the name of the series of events under Development Services. Once again, this is to really encourage our residents to come out to this open house, meet some of these departments, and participate in a survey that's critical for our city. It's part of the, the 10-year comprehensive plan, so this information and this data really helps multiple departments understand what residents want. It's a three-minute survey. We really encourage them to join us May 13th. This is at the Jose Pepe Salinas Recreation Center. It's going to be, obviously, in the afternoon, and we're going to have, you know, food and activities, but most importantly, just to really encourage them to come out and, and fill out this survey. We'll also be doing a raffle, and this is for a generator as we're approaching hurricane season. Our next event is Mind Matters Health Fair. This is under our FAR Police Department. This is going to be happening at the French Garden, right outside of our FAR One off of Nolano, Friday, May 16th. Once again, this is happening in the afternoon from 6:00 to 8:00. We have 40 vendors or 40 booths that will be out there with different services from, you know, doctors, counseling services, information, everything that has to do with mental health, and, you know, behavioral centers that will be providing information and just resources for our community. Once again, this is Friday, May 18th. It's a free event, and it's spearheaded under Chief Gonzalez. Our next event is to celebrate National Day for Outdoor Activities, or Outdoor Day in general. So, once again, Parks and Rec hosting this event, Kids to Park Day. This is happening Saturday, May 17th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Once again, this is a free event. This is in the park right off of Eldora, which is the Allen &amp; William School City Park, and this is happening, you know, for our community. We really encourage families to come out and celebrate, you know, just being outdoors with the kids, and we'll have different games, board games, and food. We'll have music, just a fun event, spearheaded for the, for our kiddos in our community. Our next event is, again, once, it's under the Work Mode On Series. That's the name of the series. All of these events fall under the umbrella of Development Services. As we're approaching hurricane season, there's a lot of questions on what is a city doing to, you know, have everything ready for hurricane season? Hopefully, we don't get hit by a hurricane, but we want to be ready. So we have multiple departments coming together, Public Works, Public Utilities, Code, Fire, Public Safety. This is happening at the DR Center in the south side of FAR from 6:00 to 8:00. Once again, this is a free event. It's, it's going to be more of a Q&amp;A format. It's almost like a mini press conference where these departments, our directors, get to answer these questions for our residents, and our residents can also, you know, just give suggestions and provide feedback that they want during hurricane season. Our moderator this year will be meteorologist Tim Smith. Once again, this is May 21st, at the FAR Development and Research Center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We're also doing raffles that day, so we really encourage people to scan the QR code on the flyer, secure their spot, and it's a generator that will also be raffled. And our last flyer is the First Annual Vendor Expo. This is under our Purchasing Director, Myra, who is actually right here, if there's any questions regarding this expo. So far, there's 140 vendors that have already registered for this first event, so already we're really expecting this to be a very successful event. Once again, this is May 22nd, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, and we'll also have multiple directors out there really elaborating what their department does. We want to have more vendors and more companies come and do business with the City of FAR and collaborate with us. And once again, this registration is still open. This flyer is on social media. They can just scan the QR code, join us. Once again, this will be a free expo, not only for those that register, but those who also attend. This concludes Events of Interest under City Managers' Report. Thank you.
Thank you, Udi. All right, next, item 6, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Any against? Motion passes. According with sections 551.071 to 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convenient in the execution to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the main agenda. The timer is now 4:40.
Right, item 7A, Consideration in Action If Any on Ordinance, Amending Ordinance Number 0-2019-37 Prescribing New Rates for Water Services.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Any against? Motion passes.
7B, Consideration in Action If Any on Ordinance, Amending Ordinance Number 0-2020-07 Prescribing New Rates for Water Services, First Reading.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Any against? Motion passes.
Item 7C, Consideration in Action If Any on Resolution Declaring Equipment as Surplus for Sale. Any items not sold through negotiation will be offered at auction.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Any against? Motion passes.
Item 7D, Consideration in Action If Any on Resolution Authorizing the City of FAR to Enter Into an Agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation to Close State Roadways for Public Events.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Any against? Motion passes.
Item 8A, Consideration in Action If Any on the Purchase of Two HPV High Water Rescue Trucks for the Fire Department from Acela Truck Company from Bozeman, Montana, in the amount of $758,692.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Any against? Motion passes.
Item 9A, Consideration in Action If Any on Rescinding City Commission Action Taken on 2/3/2025 to Reject Bids and Authorizing City Manager to Award a Construction Contract for the Commercial Vehicle Parking Area to NM Contracting for McAllen.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Any against? Motion passes.
Item 9B, Consideration in Action If Any on Agreement with McGregor Entertainment for Carnival Attractions for the City of FAR Avocado Festival on October 11th, 2025.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Any against? Motion passes. Motion adjourned. Second. Second. All those in favor? Motion passes.